Hey Doug. We're gonna start our city council meeting here in just a moment, but prior to our beginning, we've got a couple of special proclamations. And first, we're gonna talk about Money Smart Week. And I'm gonna start by turning it over to Doug Romig and kinda tell us how we're gonna start, and then have as many people as you'd like step up.
Actually, we're gonna go ahead and have Marcia Kephardt present on this. So she's been an instrumental volunteer in Money Smart Week and Bank On Central Iowa.
Thank you. Welcome to the city of Des Moines. I'm here on Bank On Central Iowa, affiliation of several banks and nonprofits in the city of Des Moines. We've been working for the last couple of years, a lot with encouragement of Chris Hansley on council, a couple of years ago, bringing it to the attention of United Way. And I, with Iowa State Bank, can sit on what's called an asset building coalition of Des Moines. And several other banks and credit unions in the Des Moines area are participating in a Bank On Central Iowa campaign, which is reaching out to our community through those that are unbanked. About, I don't have the statistics, but as many as 17% of the households in Des Moines are unbanked or underbanked. And so about 40 some thousand residents are impacted, just in the city of Des Moines and Central Iowa. So it's Bank On Central Iowa, Affinity Credit Union is a partner as well, Bank of the West, Des Moines Metro Credit Union, Financial Plus Credit Union, Village Credit Union, Wells Fargo Bank, and then Iowa State Bank. So we have locations throughout the Des Moines area. We'll hand those out so that people are familiar with the program. But also at financial education partners encouraging people to obtain financial literacy. Des Moines Community Action Agency, which Melissa Nordell-Irve has been integral as well. She's been working for the last year and really got its steam rolling and moving forward with the project. Also, the Evelyn K. Davis Center has a financial capability network. We're involved with that. The Iowa State University Extension is providing services, as well as ISED Ventures, some other staff members are here as well. And then the Mid Iowa Credit Counseling. So a combination of free education to those people that are unbanked, or have had financial situations where they've been unbanked before. And then we went to the city and wanted to encourage them to participate, and they certainly have with their support. So we are here today at the start of Money Smart Week nationally to request a proclamation. So that's...
All right.
Thank you very much. Our proclamation for this event reads as follows: Whereas the city of Des Moines, various state and local financial institutions and community organizations recognize the need to come together and address residents currently identified as unbanked or underbanked, and the need for related financial literacy programs. And whereas the Bank of Central Iowa program estimates that 8.1% of the households in the metropolitan area of Polk, Dallas, and Warren Counties are unbanked, and 17.8% of the households are underbanked. And whereas access to traditional financial products creates wealth in the community and a path to lower-cost services at mainstream financial institutions. And whereas Bank On Central Iowa is a new financial program that offers affordable financial services to the currently unbanked and underbanked that may not have access to these services. And whereas Money Smart Week is a public awareness campaign observed nationally to help consumers better understand and manage their personal finances. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of April 20th to 27th, 2013, as Money Smart Week, and Monday, April 22nd, as Bank On Central Iowa Day, and urge all of our residents of our community to take advantage of the free programs and activities offered during Money Smart Week, and recognize the importance of financial literacy and need for residents to be banked. And I want to thank everybody for participating this. We have worked on this for a number of years with other mayors around the country, and the city of Des Moines has stepped up in ways that I think exceed most of what is being done around the rest of the country. So thank you all for everything that you're doing, and let's try to offer those services to those that truly need it. Let's give 'em a big hand.
We'll put this right in the middle. I think we should take a quick photo, so everybody tighten up a little bit. And Sarah, I think you are gonna speak.
If I must.
Steph.
For all of you know, Administrative Professionals Week is our week to basically celebrate who we are as administrative professionals. Many of your offices do have an office professional. We were normally your secretary, but now we are your admin assistant. This week is usually designated for that. We have a special day, which is actually Wednesday, is Administrative Professional Day. We do try and have an event for all of the admins around Des Moines area to come in and celebrate who they are. This year, we're having an event at Jasper Winery to celebrate us, on what we've done and how far we've come. And it's just, you know, a week of celebrating what we do for your companies, and as you know, if you didn't have us, where would you be?
Whereas Administrative Professionals play an essential role in coordinating the office operations of business, government, educational institutions, and other organizations. And whereas the work of Administrative Professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities. And whereas Administrative Professionals Week is observed annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the important contributions of administrative support staff, and is sponsored by the International Association of Administrative Professionals. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of April 22nd to 26th, 2013, as Administrative Professionals Week, and Wednesday, April 24th, 2013, as Administrative Professionals Day, saluting the valuable contributions of our Administrative Professionals in the workplace. And I call on all of employers to support continued training and development for Administrative Staff, and recognizing that well-trained workforce is essential for success in today's business and certainly in city government. So thank you all for your great work, and let's give 'em a great big hand.
Say what, can we take two? Mr. Yon, if you'll come up. I think we have some other of your supported group here. As everybody assembles up here, one of our more important events in the city is not only our private and public partnership regarding our forests and our trees in the city of Des Moines, and the valuable asset that they are to our community as a whole. And here to talk about Arbor Day is David Yon.
I have another special announcement before we get to the mayor's Arbor Day proclamation. This is dated April 3rd, 2013. For immediate release, City of Des Moines, Tree City USA recipient, the National Arbor Day Foundation, and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources Forestry Bureau are proud to announce that the city of Des Moines has received the 2012 Tree City USA Award. State forester Paul Talkey commented, "The Tree City USA Award is a symbol for communities who have made a commitment to the management of public trees." The city of Des Moines has provided an outstanding example for other Iowa communities by enhancing our forest resources and demonstrating the great value of trees in providing multiple benefits for future generations. One of the stipulations to become a Tree City USA is that our mayor and city council on an annual basis will read an Arbor Day proclamation. And when the mayor reads his shortly, that will satisfy all of our commitments for 2012. And we'd like our mayor to accept this Tree City USA hat. He's partial to them, I found out last year. And we ask you to wear it proudly when you're out amongst your citizenry.
This one's a little darker green than the one that I have. It's kind of faded now, so this will be a good replacement. Thank you, David. Would you want to talk real quickly about our partnership in the public-private sector that we're working on and continuing to foster?
Well, we have a couple of really key partnerships going for us currently. One is with Tree Des Moines, the other is with Trees Forever. One's new, and one's not so new, but we value and treasure our relationships with both these groups. So I'm going to ask C.J. Hind to represent, C.J. Stevens to represent Tree Des Moines, and come and say a few words about that partnership.
Thank you, David. On behalf of the board of Tree Des Moines, I would just like to brief you on our mission, which is to assist the city in raising $400,000 to do a inventory of city trees. Once that is done, that will allow us to know what we have, what we need to work with, what we need to do, and to create a master plan for our urban forestry. In honor of Arbor Day celebration, I really challenge each of you to plant a tree, to ask three neighbors to plant a tree, because we're rapidly falling behind in our urban tree canopy. So thank you very much, and good luck planting.
Thank you, C.J. And we also have with us Leslie Burkus representing Trees Forever.
Thanks, David. I'm Leslie Burkus with Trees Forever, and I have been working with the city of Des Moines for the past year to train treekeepers. To this point, we have about 60 volunteers trained, whose sole mission is to be the eyes and ears for the city of Des Moines' trees in the urban forest. So when we have our tree inventory and working with those volunteers, we can really get a lot of hands on our trees, and make sure our trees reach their maximum maturity, so we get the full benefits for our trees for our city. Thank you.
We're developing partnerships with our citizenry all the time, but we're especially proud of these two, with Tree Des Moines and Trees Forever. So as the mayor comes to read our proclamation, I'm gonna open up our big sign for, oh, Councilman Moore.
I've gotta say this, because the mayor was talking about partnerships, and he doesn't toot his own horn enough. And it's a little-known fact that the residents of Des Moines need to understand is that our mayor is on the National Urban and Community Forestry Advisory Council, which advises the United States Department of Agriculture, U.S. Forestry, and Tom Vilsat on the needs of all cities in the nation. Frank represents those cities. So I like to say that our mayor is the most powerful person in urban forestry in this country, and I hope the word gets out.
Let's quickly read our proclamation. And whereas Des Moines strives to maintain a healthy natural environment for its citizens and guests, and whereas trees are one of Des Moines' most valuable natural resources that reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs moderates the temperature, cleans the air, produces life-giving oxygen, and helps make our community a more pleasant place to live, work, and visit. And whereas trees in our city increase residential property values and enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the protection and preservation of our urban forest for the benefit of citizenry today and future generations depends on the city of Des Moines. And whereas Des Moines has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue our reforestation and management programs towards ensuring the future of our urban forest and trees. And now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of all of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2013, as Arbor Day, and urge all of our citizens of Des Moines to celebrate Arbor Day and to support trees, to plant, maintain, and celebrate our urban forest. Let's give these folks a great big hand for all the work that you do. Give it up.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention the hard work of my own staff. These guys in orange sweaters are here representing our 13-member forestry department. Without these folks, we couldn't get all the work done that we do. I'd also like to thank my volunteer forestry assistant, Jeanette, for being here. But the reason I'm back here, I wanted to stress that we're always trying to link with other departments in the city. Typically, in cities across America, a forestry department resides in one of two places, either in public works or in parks. And we're trying our very best, as our leaders are, to partner together on all of our tree projects. So I'm really pleased to have my director, Pat Kozitsa, here, director of public works, and also Ben Page, director of parks. Thank you very much.
All right, we have one more special proclamation, and this is to celebrate sort of a longstanding group in Des Moines. And interestingly enough, I got one of the little chocolates out of the city manager's office this afternoon, and it says, "Be the first on the dance floor." And coincident to that is, or coincidental, I guess, to that is, I was reading at that same time this proclamation, which is the Castle Club of Des Moines and Ballroom Dancing Month. So I thought it really coincidental that that would be my fortune for the day, to be the first on the dance floor. So whereas the Castle Club of Des Moines is celebrating its 100th year as Central Iowa's formal ballroom dance club for couples of all ages, with music by its own Castle Club Orchestra led by Dan Hartzell and, whereas the Castle Club of Des Moines carries on the tradition of elegance from the earlier era while adopting to modern sophistication. And whereas ballroom dance has prevailed in Des Moines more than 100 years as a form of entertainment, exercise, and enjoyment. And whereas a special gala with dinner and dancing will be billed as a celebration of a century of elegance on Saturday, May 18th, 2013, at the downtown Des Moines Scottish Rite Consistory. And now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Castle Club of Des Moines and Ballroom Dancing Month, and hope that you all get out and celebrate, and try to be the first on the floor. Thank you all. All right, we'll start right in. Prior to the start of our council meeting this evening, we're gonna have a quick message from our own council member, Moore. Do you want us to stay seated this evening, or stand up?
Yeah, I'll ask him to stand.
You're gonna ask all of us to stand?
You know, today is Earth Day, today is Earth Day, and of course, Friday is Arbor Day. And anybody that knows me knows that Arbor Day is almost as good as Christmas to me. I was looking forward to talking about something to do with trees, but in lieu of Boston, and Newtown, and Watertown, I'm gonna ask everybody to stand silently for 30 seconds.
And by the way, I want to welcome back Matt Anderson and Doug Philippe, two of our city employees who ran in that race. Congratulations, and welcome back to Des Moines safe. I will ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Moved.
The item's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda, which tonight are items three through 37. These items are routine items and will be enacted by one roll-call vote without separate discussion unless someone, either a council member or someone from the general public, requests an item to be removed, to be considered separately. This evening, item four G and four X, council member Coleman votes no. Item 14 A and B, council member Moore votes no. Item 19, council member Moore wishes to speak. And item 8B, Mrs. Hensley wishes to speak. Are there any other items? Again, these are items three through 37 this evening, that anyone would like to have pulled for additional discussion. Seeing none, could we have a motion for the ballot?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Let's quickly move to item 8B, Mrs. Hensley.
We've had discussion, I know, Mayor, you've had the opportunity to speak with Larry Zimplman and others, and talked with other individuals. And what I'd like to do on the contract only on 8B, is to move to approve the contract. Approval of the signage portion of the work is subject to receipt, review, and staff approval of the final design, and I believe that will deal with the discussion that we've had ongoing.
Okay.
I'll move 8B.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 8B passes. Item 19. Item 19 is a communication regarding an update on the commission activities of the Des Moines Human Rights Commission, and request for a joint meeting with the mayor and city council members, Mr. Moore.
Well, after reading this letter from the task force chair, Christine Manbeck, I know that the Human Rights Commission's been asking us to meet since, I believe, last fall, and I think this is a reasonable request, and I would ask that we try and make it the following week. The ninth is the week that we're on the partnership trip, and I'd ask that we try and make it the following week. And with that, I'll move 19.
Can I just add, Skip, I think it's important, too, that the council have some input into the agenda. I know that the report's gonna be presented, but I just want to make sure that it's a productive meeting, that it's structured, that we have a timeline on it, and that, and I don't care, you know, maybe since you took the lead on making the motion, that you be the person that helps put the agenda together. But we've had these meetings in the past where they've not been as productive as they should be when you're asking all the council to be at the table.
I'd ask the city manager's office seek input from all council members on that.
Okay, the item's been moved.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda. Let's move to item 44, which is a report regarding off-road vehicles on Four Mile Drive, council communication number 13-201. Mr. Moore, I know that you have had some concern about this. Would you like to open that up?
I had a little bit of concern with where they want to put either posts or fencing, and the cost of this. The director of public works, myself, Pat Kozitsa, went for a ride down Four Mile Drive today, and I think that he agreed. What they're indicating they want for posts or fencing is far too great than what the actual need is. I would also agree with the statement in the blue letter that there should be a meeting held with the neighborhood and let them make a decision whether they want the fencing or they want posts down there. I don't know if Pat wants to make a statement. The chair of the neighborhood, Karen Schutman, is here. Pat?
I'll make a couple of comments, and Pat can fill in if there's other questions. This was a preliminary report, something to get it back to you, gave us two weeks, and we hit that. And Karen Schutman did a very good job of outlining what the problem is. You go out, it's very obvious. What is not always obvious is a solution. And I think what we'll probably do is stage in, put some fencing where we think it'll have the most impact. I think that's exactly what you're saying, Councilman. And see how it goes, and do something else. But, you know, it's kind of a public area, and you don't want to look wrong. So I think that'll be important to work with the neighborhood. And Pat has called me earlier today and told me he plans to do that, and try to have a good plan. And we'll give you the final plan once we get the numbers nailed down and the locations.
I believe speed is of the utmost importance. In the last two weeks, you wouldn't believe how much worse it's gotten. I think it was a real eye-opener to Pat when we went out there today. So if we could speed things up and have a meeting, probably sometime next week with the neighborhood. Well, actually, we've got, what, three weeks till the next council meeting, so there's a little bit of time there till the next council.
Yeah, we'll do it as quick as we can, because you're exactly right.
I'll move 44.
Item 45 is regarding the naming of the Cedar Street Pedestrian Bridge as the Iowa Women of Achievement Bridge, and the dedication of the bridge as part of the principal Riverwalk Multi-Use Recreational Trail, and as a parkland. Is there anybody here to discuss this item?
I'll move item 45.
Make any comment about it? Mrs. Hensley, we've got...
I'll make a comment. I had some concerns originally, you know, as to whether they checked with the donors that really put the money up for that, but it sounded like the letter we received here tonight kind of clarified that in my mind, and so I'm going to vote for it.
Okay. The question, if you're looking just to fill some time here. The question, if you're looking just to fill some time here. The question I had on it, that I did receive information back, was I would just like to see additional representation from the Riverfront Development Authority Board. You have several people that are involved that are not actually part of that board, and it seems like there might need to be another person or two that actually is from the River Development Authority. And that would just be the question I would raise, if that's possible. I mean, the individuals they have are excellent, but based upon it being city infrastructure, seems like there should be at least one person from the city, whether it's a staff or an elected.
Yeah, we'll talk to them and see if we can put either one of the council people, let you know. I think they'd probably be open to that, but we'll let them know the concern. That's not a condition, that's a suggestion.
Right.
I take it?
Yes.
Very good.
I think it's a good suggestion. I was glad to see that we had a letter from the Blanks in support of it.
Correct. Right.
All right. Item's been moved. All right.
I've got a...
Any points of discussion?
I've got a point. While we're on the subject, I would be willing to make a motion to refer it to City Legal to possibly amend the way our agendas read so that we can move hearings up to, say, 4:45 in the event that we're done early. I know in the past, we've had a couple, in the past, what, two council meetings? We've had an issue where we had to recess for 15, 20 minutes. I don't know if the legal ramifications of doing that, but maybe refer that back to City Legal to take a look at.
You're overly optimistic.
Always. Always.
For a number of years, it was way more common to be here till 9:30 and then get down to 6:00.
That's why they got some young blood on the council now.
Well, the hearings used to be at 5:30, and they moved into 5:00.
Wow.
Or wasn't it 5:30?
5:30 and that's 5:00.
All right, so we'll look at all those options and thank you.
No later than starting at 7:15.
All right, so let's, we're going to take a recess of about five minutes, and we'll be back and open up our hearings.[1052.83]